This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to begin with an invocation today. And we're pleased and honored to have Pastor Jason DuVivier with us again today. Welcome, Pastor.
Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and we invite you here, Lord. We pray that you would have your hand upon this time, that you would grant wisdom to all those who will be sharing, to the commissioners. But we just pray that you would guide these proceedings for the benefit of your people. Lord, we pray that you would continue as you always have in pouring out your grace on all people. And, Lord, that all that would be accomplished would be for your glory and for the benefit of your creation. Lord, we pray that you would just work in this time, and we thank you. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. It's about 1:31 PM. If you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of today's agenda?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Pratt with the County Attorney's Office. All of the items on the agenda for today's meeting have been reviewed by my office and meet legal approval.
Thank you, Attorney Pratt. Do any Commissioners have disclosures for any items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none. With that, we'll move to item two, which is Citizen Comment Organization Comment. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you're from prior to making any comments, and you will have up to three minutes to do so. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow all Citizen Comments. Do we have any Citizen Comments today? Let me just ask, Troy, are there any comments online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comments.
Okay. And with that, we'll close Citizen Comment and move to item three on today's agenda, which is our Consent Agenda. Let me just ask, is there any comment, either in person or online, with regard to our Consent Agenda?
I have no online comments, sir.
Okay. With that, I'll close Citizen Comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through T of the Consent Agenda. Item U is pulled from the agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Sign on. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. With that, we'll move to item four, which is our regular agenda. Our first item is the For A 2022 Developmental Disabilities Mill Levy Grant Awards in the amount of $444,158. Steve Dodrell presenting for staff. Hi, Steve.
Hello. All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Dodrell, representing Community Development. The request before you today is to approve the developmental disabilities mill levy grants recommended for 2022 funding. In November of 2001, the citizens of Douglas County approved a one-mill levy property tax to be used for the benefit of citizens with developmental disabilities and their families. The county is the designated collection and distribution agent for all property taxes within Douglas County, including the DD Mill. The county has historically distributed 93% of the mill levy funds to developmental pathways, and 1.5% is used for treasury fees. The remaining 5.5% is retained to distribute through the competitive grant process. Staff worked alongside an advisory council to review the applications submitted by organizations that serve the ADD population. Current members of the advisory council include Carol Compost, Jenny Skinnerd, Said Siddiqui, Erin Chase, and Diane Hitchingham. I would like to offer my sincere thanks and gratitude for all of the time and hard work that this amazing advisory council contributed to the review process. Thirty-seven applications were submitted by 26 organizations, and the requests totaled $912,592. The advisory council established criteria in line with the Commissioner's priorities and used a weighted evaluation tool to develop funding recommendations for the Board consideration. This year, the budget for competitive grants is $444,158. The advisory council recommended funding 30 applications based on the scores earned during the evaluation process. The recommendations can be categorized into seven categories. The following slides show the individual organizations by categories and provide a short program description along with the funding awards recommended. Many of the organizations are here today, in person or virtually. For the first category of employment, Dirt Coffee, Promise Ranch, and Teaching the Autism Community Trades received recommendations. For housing projects, the council has recommended funding Tall Tales Ranch and Sky Cliff Center. An award for respite and adult daycare is recommended for Teaching the Autism Community Trades and for two projects from Wellspring Community. Regarding equipment costs, funding recommendations are being made for Castle Rock Parks and Trails Foundation, the Main Mission, and Wellspring Community. For socialization and personal development, seven organizations received recommendations. Broken Tree, Easter Seals, Feel the Beat, Financial Health Institute, The Lone Tree Art Center, Paths to Possibilities, South Suburban Parks and Recreation will be providing a wide variety of camps, educational opportunities, and fitness programs. Therapeutic programs recommended for funding include Highlands Ranch Community Association, Praying Hands Ranch, Promise Ranch, Therapies for Hope, the towns of Castle Rock and Parker, and South Suburban Parks and Recreation. These seven organizations provide therapeutic services such as horse riding, recreation, behavioral therapy, and swimming lessons to help people with ADD develop coordination, improve their mental and physical health, build confidence, and improve socialization skills. Two applications to provide transportation services are recommended for funding. They are High Point Services and Tree Line Pass. These programs provide access to employment, adult day services, medical appointments, and enrichment programs. It is staff's recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners approve the 2022 Developmental Disabilities Mill Levy Grant Award recommendations by the advisory council. Should these recommendations be approved, award letters have been prepared for distribution to the organizations in attendance today. I would like to end by thanking all of the staff members who have supported this grant application process. I would like to reiterate my thanks to the advisory council for their wisdom and their insight. And finally, I would like to thank all the organizations serving the ADD population who are receiving these funds today and turning them into acts of love and compassion. Thank you for your tireless work and enormous impact. You and your staff are truly heroes in this community. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Stephen, thank you for that wonderful presentation. And you have really stepped up as well. We are so thankful for all of your work in terms of grant coordination and just commitment to the county. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments for staff?
No questions.
You know, Stephen, I'd like to thank you and the rest of your team that really brought to the Commissioners, gosh, maybe a year and a half ago, the needs of the ADD community here in our community. And, you know, I look at in the audience, and a year ago, I wouldn't have known people but the, like, Ruth and Ricky over here, and Peter and Nicole. So many of you. You have taught me so much about a community that brings so much to our community. So I'm really excited to be a part of this today. So thank you for everyone who's here for this really great celebration. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Great. With that, let me just open it up for any Citizen Comment. Is there any Citizen Comment, either in person or online, with regard to this item?
Commissioner, this is Troy. I have no online comment.
Okay. Hello, sir.
Well, Commissioners, my name is Michael Kogel, representing Financial Health Institute. I'm the Vice President of Engagement and Education. So last year, you awarded revenue to us, and we were able to work with Eden Care about this topic of financial health and financial literacy. And I wanted to share just briefly some comments from those participants about how they reacted to the education. Concerning the topic of money choices, participants said I learned about counting my money to save it. Another participant said I learned to keep track of my money and check my bank account. Another participant said I learned to figure out what I'm spending money on and make the changes to save money. When asked, "How much did you learn about making money choices?", 97% of them said, "A lot." Another topic around marketing and branding, "I learned marketing can make you buy more." "I learned marketing can be persuadable." "How much did you learn about marketing and branding?", 100% said, "A lot." And lastly, a topic we focus on is scams. And they said, "I learned a lot about scams, and I know to ask for help now." So I want to thank you for the funding offered in 2021 that we used in 2022. This year, we've already made arrangements to work with Wellspring for the funding that you've given us for next year. So on behalf of the participants and the agencies we work with, and myself, thank you very much, and really appreciate Stephen's support and the advisory council. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us today. Any additional Citizen Comment?
Good afternoon. Commissioners, Peter Barber here with Wellspring Community. Just wanted to highlight, we have some stars that are in the room with us from Wellspring here today. And these grants will go towards providing care and more opportunities, just like today, where they can go out into the community. So thank you very much. Thank you for your heart for this population and for making sure that they are not overlooked, marginalized, or forgotten in the midst of our county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Could you have him stand up?
Oh, sure. If you're a star, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you so much for being with us, guys. Any additional Citizen Comment? Hi.
Hi, Albebee LoR McKenna with Tall Tales Ranch. I don't even know that I can express how happy we are with receiving the grant for the land development piece of our project. Last year, we received grants for architectural drawings which have been completed, thanks to the donation. And this year, we're already getting excited and started on our land development phase. And I just want to, you know, I've worked in a lot of different states, actually, in the ADD population and community. And it's really refreshing to see the county really accept the need and realize the need for housing for this population, a systematic need that's barely recognized in other communities. And it's been really refreshing to see that you recognize how important it is. So we're excited to get started at Tall Tales Ranch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're excited as well. Additional Citizen Comment?
Hello. Mike and Kathy Hully from the Main Mission in Sedalia. First, a big thank you to Stephen and his team, and a big thank you to you guys. You Commissioners, you had confidence in us 11 months ago and gave us a grant to start work in the ADD community. And you had more confidence in us than we had in ourselves. Going into this year, we had estimated we'd see about 100 ADD community folks, and we were able to see over 400 this summer. So it was a very big year for us, and we hope next year to be able to even do more. And again, thank you for your confidence in us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. How about a round of applause for that? Wow.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Brendan. I work for South Suburban Parks and Recreation. You guys have been so great over all the years I've been able to apply and utilize the Douglas County grant. This is from a client. "Thank you for the grant given to South Suburban Recreation District Star Program. Megan has loved being able to go out into the community with her friends. Santa's workshop, fishing, boondocks, bowling, movies. So much fun, so much social relationships being formed, drama, friendship. It's all there. It's awesome." Just being able to foster that and let these individuals grow as humans, as individuals. So really, just thank you again for your support, allowing us to pay for price when we go to facilities. I mean, sure, I'll work some discounts if I can, but really just creating the positivity of individuals with disabilities in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Appreciate South Suburban. Any additional Citizen Comment? Now, here are some familiar faces and friends. Welcome, guys.
So it's with real joy and excitement that we stand before you, Lori Parker, Ruth Noel, who you know, and Rick Noel as well. Ruth and I are business partners for an organization called Paths to Possibilities, and we're just so excited to accept the funds through the Mill Levy Grant. So appreciate it. Our organization was developed in 2008, and from that time, we have brought hundreds of different person-centered strategic life plans to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities across the Denver metro area. So we're excited to be able to continue offering that, in particular, to residents within Douglas County. I wanted to just share a little bit about the PATH process and share what it is that PATH participants, and that's what we refer to as the Strategic Life Planning Process that we use, is the PATH. 100% of PATH participants consistently report that this process is vastly different than other more formal planning processes that they have experienced. They love the new resources and opportunities and supports and definitely cherish the concrete plan that comes out of this planning process. So there are so many things that I could highlight about the work that we do and the PATH Plan process, but one unique aspect of our facilitation process is using graphic recording because we want to include everyone and know that pictures are worth 1,000 words. And so with that... Permission for Rick to approach?
Yes, please.
He has stuff, and we have caught. So I'm Ruth, and I get to work with Lori. We've been doing this together since 2008. And what Rick is passing out are actual examples of the PATH plans that we do. And the Commissioners might notice that none of them look alike because all of them are completely different. Somebody up there might have Chris's PATH Plan. Chris was all about independence. His parents are very motivated for him to move out and live independently. So his plan was a lot around independence, and some of us might know people that are looking for independence. Sydney's PATH Plan was more about her health and managing her own health, and also sharing with her community and her family what her dreams were so that they could help support her. I have 27 seconds. Micah's PATH Plan? My favorite story about Micah is, after the PATH Plan, we asked the people in the room, "What did you think? What was your experience?" He had two brothers who live in the Denver area present for the PATH Plan. And one of the brothers quietly, timidly said, "I had no idea those were his dreams. I live right here in Denver. Micah's in Parker. I'm here to help." I usually cry during that one. Then, following up, was giving a parent presentation. We do a lot of parent presentations, a lot of education. "With permission from Toby, I share Micah's PATH." She was in one of the presentations. I'm like, "Oh, I'm going to be talking about your son now? And she said, "Rick, I have an update. Looking at college was on his PATH Plan. He is now enrolled in the Inclusive Ed Program at ACC." So we get to see successes. The last one, and I'm way past time, is Fumé's.
I reset it, Ruth.
Take your time.
Okay, I'm stopping. So, thank you.
You have to remember this.
And last is, we now are working towards having a Spanish facilitator because Lori's fluent, so we'll be able to do Spanish facilitation also. Thank you, Commissioners, for your gift.
Thank you all. Thanks so much. Do we have any additional Citizen Comment?
Hello. I'm Marnie Hanson with the Castle Rock Parks and Trails Foundation. Thanks, Commissioners, and to the advisory board for considering us for the grant. We are helping to fund Possibilities Playground, which will be a playground in the meadows here in Castle Rock, which will be all-inclusive and barrier-free, allowing citizens in Castle Rock to get together and play and have fun without any barriers. And we're so thankful for the help and the values that you place upon this. I am also here on behalf of the Castle Rock Therapeutic Recreation. Our staff member could not make it today, and she wanted to express the continued support is very meaningful to everybody in therapeutic recreation in Castle Rock. So thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Do we have any additional Citizen Comment? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Chris Overton. I'm with Easter Seals Colorado, and I wanted to thank the Board of County Commissioners as well as the taxpayers and, I guess, really everyone in Douglas County for your continued support. It makes our work possible, and we're extremely grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Appreciate it. Do we have any other Citizen Comment? Okay. Troy, did we have any additional Citizen Comment online?
No, sir. No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close Citizen Comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
You know, an old saying in the poly science class is, "You can judge a society by how it treats the most vulnerable among it." And I've always felt like Douglas County... I moved here in 1997. For the lion's share of the time that I have lived in Douglas County, we have had this tax, on our sales tax, to support the ADD community. And I always, I've never been a fan of taxes. You can ask many people. It's a well-known fact. But I always felt good about this. And I've had friends, growing up, who had family members who benefited from this extra cost that we, as a society here in Douglas County, took on to benefit some of the most vulnerable among us. I think we all agree, the work is not done by any means. Perhaps this is a journey that does not ever have an end. But it's, well, you know, thank you, Wellspring. Thank you, Ruth. Thank you for the folks that have come in this year to include us in your plans and help us be a part of the solutions that I really hope for the stars in the room. Rick, everybody who has benefited from this has made a difference, and a difference that is positive. We're all Americans. We all deserve to be here. We all deserve the opportunity to live the best lives we can. So with that said, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve the 2022 Developmental Disabilities Mill Levy Grant Award in the amount of $444,158,000. And I welcome further discussion from the Board.
Thank you, Commissioner, too.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I'll just add, I am very thankful and honored that this Board and previous Boards have appointed me to serve on the Developmental Pathways Board for the entire time of my first term. And it's really been heartwarming to see the partnership among this Board of County Commissioners to unanimously support all of the hard work that each and every one of you are doing. I'm not sure if any of you caught our recent State of the County, but for the first time, I think, in a really long time, we were able to feature the ADD community and all the work that each of you does to lift up those that are most vulnerable. So we couldn't be more proud to partner with you. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to work well together to serve each and every one of you. Appreciate you guys. Any further... Thanks. Any further discussion? Sign on. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Now, with that, each Commissioner has a series of checks, the thing you actually are going to get to walk away with today. So we're going to walk down, and each of us is going to read off a name. So if you want to come up and collect your check, and then afterwards, I think we are going to take a photograph. Right, Stephen? Okay.
Oh, man, for a second there, the way you were saying that, I thought we get to walk away with the check.
Oh, man. That's it. I'm not in this role.
All right. There are no swat. I'd be happy to kick it off. So I very much considered, after hearing Peter Barber speak today, banning him from ever speaking in this room again because we're just going to do more of this. Wellspring Community. There, I meant that. But you can come back. You should. Absolutely. Well done. I have Sky Cliff Center. A place I know a little bit about, the town of Castle Rock. Congratulations. Thank you.
Broken Tree Community Center.
I have Teaching the Autism Community Trades. Okay, we'll hang on to that one.
Okay, we'll hang on to that one. What about South Suburban Parks and Trails? The Vane Mission. I have Dirt Coffee. Okay, I'll hang on to this one. What about High Point Services? High Point. Okay. What about the Low Tree Art Center? That's my district, so I will. The Financial Health Institute. Congratulations on that. Thank you very much.
Moss is okay.
Moss is in my district, the Town of Parker. My agri-suit I drive by every time to the grocery store, Promise Ranch. Congratulations. Thank you.
Island Ranch Community Associates.
How about a check? Just one. Again, people I know a little bit. Castle Rock Parks and Trails Foundation.
Easter Seals Colorado. Gray Hands Ranch.
So thank you, everyone. Matthew would like to have all of you up for a photo. So you are part of this presentation today. When you come in, it's up here. This is our director, Drew. He'll tell us right now.
There you go.
Enjoy being here.
All right. Yeah, maybe just tighten just a little more on here. Yeah, thank you. All right, guys. Big crowd. All right, looks good. All right, and on three, I'll take a couple here. One, two, three. And then one more round. One, two, three. Great, thank you, everybody.
Nice to see you guys.
Well, you're going to start getting the building.
Yeah. Where are we at with that?
I am in Marin, I don't know where you are. I think there was...
Taco Bell. You don't need this with jackets. No. Hey, Nicole. Thank you for the goodies. I still want our fan punch. Okay. I have some times in the next two days. You know, around the next two days.
I'll text you some dates.
Dude. Oh, and then you have more, round two? God, I got the fish rounding. Yeah, should I? You know, why? Yeah. I thought you left the mail here. I have a lot of business meetings there, so Cory, I don't know what to do.
That was funny. Nice comments, by the way. Thank you. That was cool.
I do. I have great coffee. Call me. Call me. God bless you guys. Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity to finalize that last item. It's always so heartwarming to meet with members of our community on good projects, but thank you for your patience with us. With that, we're moving to Item 4B, which is a purchase request for the Deckers Radio Tower in the amount of $2,486,242. Captain Troy McCarty. Welcome, Captain.
Guess I don't have to get real close to this mic, do I? Commissioners, thank you for having us here. I'm representing the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and we're seeking approval of an IGA regarding transfer of property and construction of shared communication towers. And to spare any wrong information I might give you, I brought my two extraordinary people who worked so hard on this project, Lieutenant Ron Haniven and Jeff Vaughn.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome.
I guess I'll just do a real quick, brief rundown history on this just for the benefit of those who are in the room and the public. The Deckers area, as we've all discussed in work sessions, for 22 years, I've been tasked with trying to solve our communications problems down there. We've come up with several different solutions that, for some reason over time, just fell apart, wouldn't work. We've finally found the proper location with the right partner, landowner, that being Denver Water Board. They actually unanimously approved the IGA yesterday that included the lease for this radio tower site as well as a quick claim deed for 10 and 1/2 acres, I believe it is, of property that will allow us to also build housing and basically a new substation in the Deckers area for our deputies that live down there so we can better serve that community. While it's only roughly 1,000 permanent residents during 2020, we actually had over a million visitors in that area, and it was evident every time we went down there. Every campground was full. Rivers were always full of people fishing, et cetera, out hiking. So it gives me great pleasure to say that we received that IGA from Denver Water yesterday that will be presented to all January 10th for that approval, the one that Captain was referencing. So this radio site provides... would provide communications, not just for the Sheriff's Office. It's for all public safety, both Douglas County and Jefferson County in the area, as well as State Patrol, CDOT, and all of our public works, et cetera. So unless there are any technical questions, I won't get into too many details because I know you all have heard this a couple of times already. So unless anyone had questions, or Ron, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay.
Wonderful presentation. Any questions for the Sheriff's Office?
I'm super tempted to keep the conversation light and ask about it. And what is the gauge of the main communications cable? But I won't.
I'd like to thank you for putting this together. Having been a state trooper in the Deckers area and knowing that there was really no communication, we would have to go to the Deckers store and make a phone call, I am really pleased that, finally, after all these years and your work... I also sit on the 911 Board, so I have been watching this progress. And I think this is really good on a lot of different fronts. It's going to create communication. You guys have bridged a gap and gotten an agreement with Denver Water, which is amazing in and of itself. So thank you for that work. Because now that that door is open, I think we'll have a lot of good partnership and communication with Denver Water. The ability to build housing for deputies. Again, when I was a trooper, it would take me an hour from here to get there. And that's not good public safety. So I appreciate your thought and your planning to have housing there. So there are deputies there who are not only close to respond, but actually part of the community, which, you know, years ago, they talked about community policing. But when you've got police in the neighborhood, you develop those relationships that are worth again. And people tell their friends what's going on, and that's a good way to help additionally keep the community safe by having deputies living there. So thank you for bringing this forward. And again, this is another partnership with the 911 Board. Jeff, I think it's $1 million that the Board is putting into this project. Again, the Grace, thank you for being so engaged in all the work you've done to get us here. And I think this is just really a good project a long time in coming. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know, gentlemen, as a fifth-generation Coloradan, to hear the presentation about, really, this significant gap in communications and public safety and to see you close that gap, resolve the issue efficiently with great partners, Denver Water, and obviously Motorola, the 911 Board, and others, that's really exciting from my vantage point. Again, avoiding that one-hour delay that has been occurring for so long. We know that the people in that area will be well-served by this new communication tool and the housing. So thank you. Thank you so much. Great concept. Any additional comment or question for staff? Okay, seeing none, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to this Item 4B?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the Board for any further conversation and/or emotion.
I have a motion to approve the purchase request for Deckers Radio Tower in the amount of $2,486,242.
I recognize that that's a lot of money. This is a significant cost. But in this modern day and age, to not have network communication in dealing with crisis response, law enforcement is... It's really just not acceptable. So this is a no-brainer and a second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries three zero. With that, and congratulations, guys. Thank you very much for being here. With that, we'll move to Item 5. Any other business? Seeing none, moving to our County Manager report. Any report from our County Manager, Doug the Board?
Nothing today, thank you.
Okay. And then Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments?
I have none, thank you.
My only comment would be, at our last business meeting, I spoke about, you know, keeping in mind a plan for giving during the holiday season. Today, I'd like to reflect back upon what we did with the service providers for individuals with developmental disabilities. Last meeting, I asked you to consider giving within your community. Today, I would like everyone within the sound of my voice to consider making space in your budget. And while you're buying presents, also consider giving to some of these really great and unique organizations that we endowed today. The work is not done.
Great comment, Commissioner Till. Well received. And I would ask, if the Board can stick around, we do have two items after we adjourned today. If we can do the Lincoln Station Local Improvement District, as well as the Woodmore Mountain GID Actions. And then, following that, we will begin our public hearing. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 1:30 p.m. Thank you. So with that, if we can move into our... Yes? Oh, okay. Chris indicated you.
So starting at 2:30, I'm sorry if that wasn't...
Oh, okay.